Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the pledge, and I ask you to remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a review and justice for all.
Remain standing. Asking for a moment's silence for a couple people we lost over the last couple of weeks. Mary Ellen Carl, sister of Councilman John Hoover, passed away on Saturday, November 16th, following a long illness. Born and raised in Staten Island, she resided in Brooklyn, Pat Condon in Sussex County for many years, began her nursing education at St. Mary's Hospital in Brooklyn, earning a nursing degree at St. Vincent's in Staten Island. And then she enjoyed running the Well Baby Unit for many years. She finished her nursing career at Barn Hill Care Center in Newton. Mary Ellen is survived by her two daughters, two sons, five grandchildren, as well as her brothers, John and Robert. So our thoughts are with you and your family. Also a moment of silence for Anthony Curdo, with nicknames The Bus Driver and The Witch. A lifelong Madison resident, died peacefully surrounded by his family on November 18th. Married to his wife for 51 years, Nancy. Tony was active supporter, dedicated fan of all Madison sports, and you would have seen him working the chains at Madison High School football games for many years. He was a bus driver with the Board of Education for 26 years, and reliable, dependable, and remembered by generations of students. And also, we just received a call today that Jack O'Donnell, who many people will know, lifelong Madisonian, and you'll remember him from Shop Right, always helping with carts and maybe asking for a cookie or two as he helped out. Jack faced many challenges in life, but always greeted everyone with a big smile. And as part of the O'Donnell family that produced many of Madison's football stars, Jack could always be seen on the sidelines of the games cheering his brothers on, or years after cheering on the Dodgers. He leaves behind five brothers, a sister, and was predeceased by two sisters and his parents. And also Kurt Wilson, longtime consultant for our electric utility. Kurt died last week after a long illness, but he was working right up to the end. Kurt worked with our utility, is one of the reasons why we have the most reliable systems in the country. So let's take a moment to recognize those four and their families. Turn around between meetings, we have no minutes for approval. Welcome all. At the last meeting, we weren't able to congratulate Maureen, and for another three years. Congratulations, looking forward to your continued work with the borough.
Thank you.
This Friday will be the last day on the job for Sergeant Paul Kozakowski, as he enters retirement. Paul joined the force in 1995 as a third generation of Kozakowskis to serve Madison. His last assignment will be in the Christmas parade. And Paul certainly won't be a stranger to go for. You'll probably see him right at the corner of Lincoln and Waverly at the Pink Pear, helping his wife with the store. And, you know, of course, this Friday, besides Paul's retirement, as I mentioned, is the parade. So this year's tree is a donation from Jim Butler. In 1976, Jim bought a three-foot live spruce to use for a family Christmas tree. After Christmas is over, he kept it in his garage a little bit, and then transplanted it the following spring. And now, as a full-grown tree, it is at the end of Waverly Place, and will be lighting on Friday with a traditional parade. And lighting the tree will be Police Chief Darren Datchison and his children. So if you see John Butler, please thank him for his donation. And a little public service announcement for the parade, hopefully I'm not touching on other people's announcements, but please encourage children not to go into the street to run after the candy, and better yet, encourage the marchers not to be throwing the candy. Last week, I attended with many others the League of Municipals Conference. Madison was recognized for, once again, achieving Silver Certification from Sustainable New Jersey, and I want to thank Kathleen Caca Valley for her leadership behind all the work to get us that award. It was not easy to do, but we were fairly close to being the number one in our category. I also moderated two workshops, one on websites, and another which was a cautionary tale for elected officials as it relates to ethics, which is a very interesting workshop. And thanks to Ray and others, I was recognized by the Municipal Managers Association as the Elected Official of the Year, and certainly an honor to be recognized. And, you know, it was recognized elected officials who work with staff, and it is an example of why we are the best town in the state, that we really work so well together. So I thank all those that went down to see me receive it, and all those that make this such a great place day after day. I do have one little correspondence that I did not share with the clerk, but I'll read it now. It says, "Dear Mayor Bob Conley, I want to thank you for everything you do for Madison and me. P.S. Write back soon. Sincerely, Katie Pagliarulo." So it was just a lovely note from a young Madison resident, and when people ask me, "Why do you keep serving as mayor?", it's things like this that really make it all worthwhile. And announcement that our reorganization meeting will be on Monday, January 6th, right?
Yeah.
At 6:00 PM, right here, where we will give the oath of office to Rachel, Maureen, and myself, and thanking Pat for his great years of service. And we also have a special meeting for the council that is scheduled for Thursday, December 19th.
Nineteenth.
Thank you. Don't have all the notes in front of me. That's also at 6:00 PM. And with that, that's my greetings outside of happy Thanksgiving. Reports from committees, public safety, Council President Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report, you gave it for me.
Oh, there you go. I knew I would step on some toes. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, the budget is one of the most important tools that we have to manage expenditures and revenues. Ray and Jim has been continually monitoring the budget, but they put in extra time reviewing it this time of the year. So far, all the expenditures and revenues seem in line with the budget, which is a good thing. Ray and Jim have been working with department heads to finalize the five-year capital plan, which will be distributed to the council in about a week and discussed in detail in January. One of the biggest items on that list is a much-needed replacement to the Fire Department's pumper truck engine three. We've already appropriated some of the funds in 2018 and 2019, so we can make this purchase. The final capital appropriation will be included in the 2020 capital budget. This is an important piece of equipment that is almost 30 years old and needs to be replaced. I was going to be funny about this, but it's not really funny. Now I want to talk about garbage. There's a resolution on tonight's agenda to award a contract for solid waste collection. This is the contract with the company that picks up the residential curbside garbage. We had an excellent contract, flat pricing for five years that is expiring at the end of this year. Contract for recycling hauling is also expiring at the end of the year, and so is the contract for the facility that accepts Madison's recyclables and markets, or sells the cans, plastic, and paper. All indications are that these recycling and marketing costs will be increasing in 2020 and beyond. As many of you have heard, China used to be a large purchaser of recyclable materials, but they have basically stopped purchasing the material from the United States. This has been a significant impact on cost. Administration anticipates that garbage and recycling will be an important topic discussed during the upcoming budget meeting. This is something that Jim and Ray have been talking about for a long time, and really working very diligently on this particular contract. But we've only had one bidder, so we're kind of stuck at this point, I think. The state of New Jersey continues to revise and fix the Financial Automation Submission Tracking, or FAST system. Unfortunately, the name FAST does not describe the state of New Jersey as a reasonable mission. The system has been very slow. The state has been working on the system for two years. There are certain financial documents that are uploaded onto the FAST system, such as the 2019 annual debt statement and the Best Practices checklist. Hopefully, the state will fix the budget portion of FAST soon. When complete, the budget module will allow towns to better compare their costs to peer communities, which is a good thing. The chief financial officer and the finance staff will be spending a significant amount of time with FAST training, and implementation on the system is up and running. As you heard, the mayor talk about Kurt Wilson. I've known him over the years. He was a genuinely wonderful man that helped this town a great deal, so he will be missed.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, I'd like to echo what Carmella just said about Kurt Wilson. I met him over the years at the Utility Committee, and he was a great asset for this town and a really nice person, and it's a shame that he's not going to be with us anymore. From the Electric Department, the department's also been assisting the Department of Public Works with cutting and removing storm damaged trees and picking up the items with their digger. Last Thursday, the department hung 100 wreaths on the Victorian lampposts in the town in preparation for the holiday season. And finally, they also have many more months of storm-related repairs ahead, and are still receiving many phone calls regarding low-hanging wires. From the Water Department, the Community Place project of installing a new eight-inch water main with new hydrant has been completed. This reconstruction included new larger-sized water services due to an increase in the number of apartment buildings in that area. And again, residents are being reminded to shut down their irrigation or sprinkler systems and outside hose faucets for the winter. Please also remove those hoses from the outside valves, because even antifrost faucet freezes, and the water cannot drain away from it. And then for both the departments, the Water Department assisted the Electric Department with removal of a tree stump at Seven Tooth Place, or Toth Place, I can't remember how to say that, Tooth, and assisted in the planting of a new tree. The residents graciously donated their 35-foot blue spruce to serve as our 2019 Madison Christmas tree. The department cut the tree down and installed in the center of town at Waverly Place, and the following day, they hung up the lights and installed the star at the top. And this coming Friday, Santa's going to be on hand to help us light the whole tree. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From Department of Public Works, the lawn and leaf pickup continues. The crews are on target to pick up all leaves by mid to late December, depending on the weather. The GPW continues to maintain the motor vehicle fleet, the EMS ambulance three got new brakes, and the senior citizen bus received additional repairs. The Parks Department continues to maintain the fields and prepare them for the winter. From Engineering, Stefeli and Son completed work on Community Place, and paving will take place tomorrow, November 26th, prior to the Thanksgiving weekend. And finally, from Engineering, the solar crosswalk signs are being installed with the cooperation of DPW and the Electric Department. From the Madison Environmental Commission, the MEC is collecting reusable bags. Bins will be at Hartley Dodge Memorial and Grace Church for the drop-off of extra reusable bags. If you're like me, they mate in the back of your car, and you have 20 or 30 bags, you only need a couple, so donate these. We're hoping to raise 1,000 bags, which will be distributed to the Senior Center, Winter the Spirit, Immigrant Resources Center, and Drew University students. And as I said, the hope is to have 1,000 bags distributed by Madison by March 1st, when the plastic ban goes into effect. Madison Environmental Commission is also putting up some Echo Holiday suggestions. I'll just read a few. You can recycle Styrofoam peanuts and bubble wrap at Pack Ship &amp; More at the Staples Mall. You can recycle non-alkaline batteries at the back door of PC Problems on Main Street. They will also take Button Cell lithium and rechargeable batteries, so don't throw them in the garbage, it's actually very, very bad to do that. You can try non-material or experiential gifts. Give somebody, Diane Mann is here, give someone a gift certificate to join the YMCA. Give them a Wax in the City gift certificate. You know, that cuts down on, you don't have to wrap it. And finally, a challenge. Madison is a community that reaches out and supports its neighbors. This holiday season, we have a number of ways to reach out, and shall we care? The first is the Eagle Holiday Fund. For years, volunteers have been making holiday magic for the needy seniors and families in Madison. It is one of the signature Madison events, like Bottle Hill Day and May Day, when we come together to celebrate our community. Please consider contributing to this worthwhile endeavor. And finally, Saturday is Small Business Saturday. We have a wonderful downtown with a great variety of gift opportunities to choose from. Many, if not most, of our merchants are Madison residents and support numerous fundraising efforts in town. I challenge you to join me this year in making this a Madison holiday gift year, and spend your gift dollars in Madison. And don't forget to bring your reusable bag. Thank you.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. One important item that I would like to mention again, that we talked about last time, is that the Office of Business Development has assumed the responsibility for all Borough of Madison parking permits. Commuter resident parking permit renewal applications have been sent to all current 2019 holders, who will have until December 1st. That's important, December 1st. It's coming up very quickly to complete the process. After this date, the remaining permits will be made available to those on the waiting list while available. Questions regarding parking can be sent to parking@rosenet.org. Merchant employee and residential tenant renewal applications will be sent before mid-November, so they should be out already. And the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the museum will be a host site for the Madison Holiday Arts Festival on November 29th and 30th. The museum will also be one of seven historical sites participating in Holly Walk on December 7th and 8th. This is sponsored by Mars Tourism and attracts hundreds of visitors from the area. Tickets are available for Holly Walk by going to the Mars Tourism site or find a link on the museum website. This should be very good publicity for Madison. The museum has informed that a proposal submitted to Partnership for Historical Building Architects was accepted by the Mid-Atlantic Association of Museums, Building and Museum Symposium. The director will be joining architects in Chicago this spring at the annual symposium to talk about the ongoing restoration and conservation of the historic James Library Building. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Just two quick things. A reminder that there will be a free rabies clinic on Saturday, December 7th, from 10 to noon, at the Public Works Garage at 34 John Avenue. And flu vaccines are still available, you can contact the Health Department. Parents of preschool children should be aware that December 31st is the deadline for this season's flu immunization required to remain enrolled in preschool. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right, now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. As always, this is one limited to agenda items, which is, we have one agenda item, the YMCA presentation on teen programs, and you can also comment on the resolutions. I will go through those resolutions right now, so those in the audience will know it, and also those watching this at home later this week knows what was in the consent agenda. So Resolution 323, awarding the solid waste collection and disposal contract at Superb and Disposal for three years, and this is for the amount of 1.4 million, and this will be funded through the budgets of 2020, 21, and 2022. 324 is a resolution permitting restaurant bars to remain open until 2:00 AM on Thursday, which is actually Wednesday night on Thanksgiving Eve, because normally they'd have to close at 1:00. Resolution 325 is awarding professional services contract to Minneke Associates for Wetland Permitting and Associated Engineering Services, and this is related to the Trails in Memorial Park that we're planning to put in there, and this is of 49,750, funded through Ordinance 52. Resolution 326 is awarding professional services contract to Amlin Ostercorn for consulting services and surveyors for field surveys for the reconstruction of various roads for the 2020 road construction projects. And this is going to be funded through either Ordinance 1, 2019, or other areas designated by the CFO. Resolution 327 is reduction in surety and cash bond to University Meadow Harding Homes for construction of Lewanica Terrace cul-de-sac, and this is, the bond was 122,000, cash bond 15,000. Resolution 328 is confirming the membership of John Downs to the Madison Hook and Ladder Volunteer Company, as a volunteer, as mentioned. Resolution 329, appointing William DiMartino and John McCulloch to the position of substitute crossing guard. Resolution 330 is the sale of surplus property of the Borough and Madison Public Library that no longer needed for public use, and this will be online auction through municipalbit.com. Resolution 331 is authorizing a road opening permit to allow utility connections for a minor subdivision at 36 Slatethorpe Avenue. They need to restore the road curb-to-curb afterwards. Resolution 332 is authorizing membership of National Purchasing Alliance Cooperation Pricing Council, another co-op for getting us the best possible bang for the buck as we purchase items. Resolution 333, requesting Director of Local Government Services to approve an insertion of item of revenue in the current budget, and this is for a grant of $9,400 from the Division of Highway Traffic Safety and drunk driving enforcement fund. And so we're able to recognize that fund by making that adjustment. So if anyone wants to comment on any of those resolutions or the agenda item, please step forward, state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period to four. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and invite the YMCA to step forward for a presentation.
Right up to you. Well, first of all, thank you very much for this opportunity to be here. I want to thank the council, thank Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very thrilled to be here, I'm proud to be here. It is really quite an honor, so we can discuss how we might, you know, partner, help the constituents of Madison, and in particular, we're talking about the teenagers. And I think we're all on the same page with respect to our goals, which is to help the kids and the families of Madison. I've been a Madison resident, some of you may not know me, I'm Scott Comple, I live on Edgewood Road in Madison. I was born in Madison, grew up here, and lived here pretty much all my life. In fact, I tell people I'm the most boring guy in the world. I married the same wife for 37 years, and I've lived in Madison for, I don't know, 55 out of 62 years or something, so. But I'm very proud of Madison, and also proud of our YMCA. And I think about the Y having started in 1873, if you think about that, that's before the town was incorporated. So it's been here a long, long time, because somebody had a vision to help families and to help kids. And that vision, and those benefits are still continuing today. And I think of all the volunteer roles that I've done over the years, being on the board of the Madison Y, and now chairing the board, has been one of the most pleasurable ones I've had, and the reason is because I see that it really works. We really are helping families, we're helping kids. And I think of like my father, and what the role of the Y was to our family, and then what the role of the Y has been to my kids, and I think of my best friend when he lost his father, and how the Y was instrumental in his development. It's always been there, everybody's got a YMCA story. And we do this without whatever the economic status of the person is, it doesn't matter, the doors are open for the YMCA. So the Y provides service, as you know, to all ages, you know, starting with the kids who learn how to swim, all the way to seniors that are cancer survivors or dealing with Parkinson's disease or what have you. But there's a group that sometimes gets underserved, and that is the teenagers. And I think you'd all agree that teenagers need a place to go, need a place where they're safe. We want our kids to be safe. We want them to be in a place and be in an environment where they're learning skills. And I think the YMCA has been doing that for many years. It's a vulnerable group in our society, and I think it's very important for them to have a safe place where they can go. So our goal is really to engage as many teens and pre-teens as possible. And I'm sure you'll agree that that's an important thing to do, to have a safe environment where teenagers can feel engaged, be involved in structured activities, and to be productive, happy adults, learning skills that'll help them advance in academia, in employment, and just better serve their own communities. So as you listen to this presentation, what I would encourage you to do is to think about how we can partner together. Let's take this great town of Madison, the great organization of the YMCA, and think about ways that we can partner together so that our teens have a safe place where they can go, and have the services that they need. So I thank you for your time, I really appreciate it, and on the behalf of the teenagers and the families of Madison, I thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Diane Mann, the CEO of the Y.
So, good evening, Mayor Conley and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I think you know the Y reasonably well. One of the things that you can be so proud of in terms of this community is that the Y has always been outstanding in terms of the volunteer leadership, the talented people who stand behind the Y. It's always been a partnership between the paid staff and the Board of Directors, and Scott, as a lifelong native, committed to this community, as are most of you, is a testament to the quality of what we try to do together. As Scott was saying, one of the most important things we do with teen programs is try to attract and get the attention of teens. Most of you who have raised kids know that's a bit of a challenge. We've always been able to do that well at the Y, because we have the staff, we have the program content to hold and attract the interest of teens. And we've been able to do that because our programs have not had fees historically, and that's something we'll talk a little bit more about tonight. So in terms of our goals, I think you're familiar with what we try to do, structured, healthy development for teens, preparing them to excel in their academic careers and in college, and prepare them for employment. There are also some programs we'll talk about a bit tonight that center on teaching them the responsibilities of civics and citizenship, which is increasingly important, as you all know. Before we dive into what the programs are, I wanted to give you a picture of just the volume of the teens and pre-teens that participate in our programs. What you have here is a brief list of the Y programs that we have, I'll describe them a bit in a minute. In the center is the volume of all participants across our service area, which includes the Borough and Township of the Chatham's, Madison, Harding, and all of Florham Park. So 849 total participants in the program in the academic year for 2018 to 2019, and then of that number, 571 are Madison students. So just to give you a picture of that. The work that we do centers in a number of leading programs, but the location of the Bozhardt Family Teen Center is where most of our programs are headquartered. We do special workshops there, the Teen Leadership Club meets there on Monday nights. Our summer camp is headquartered in the Teen Center. It's dedicated space, I think you've all seen it, we converted a racquetball court into our Teen Center. Important programs that we've done, one great example last year was partnering with the Police Department to do Hidden in Plain Sight, which is an education program for families, particularly adults, to know how to be aware of what might be going on in their own homes in terms of substance use for kids. That happened at the Teen Center. Our leading program, Friday nights, for many years, has been Teen Scene. This is a no-fee activity night at the Y. We get more, arguably, we get more junior school students than we do high school students on these Friday nights, but it's a place that is exactly for pre-teens, a safe, structured environment, where in Teen Scene, they can be all environment, where in Teen Scene they can be all over the Y, swimming, playing basketball, in the Buttonheim Room, dancing, or hanging out in the teen center playing games. It's loosely structured, but it is well-supervised, and it's been a dedicated place for socializing for an awkward group of teens who aren't yet fully independent, but certainly are old enough to be a bit on their own. The seventh grade initiative we introduced a few years ago, and this was dedicated to middle school students who are just in the seventh and eighth grade, about ready to start taking responsibility for their own personal health. So the seventh grade initiative is centered again on a no-fee program, where the teens are welcome to come to the Y, and they teach and learn about nutrition, healthy eating, how to manage their lifestyle, their fitness and their health, and they're trained on our equipment. This is a particularly good program for young teens who may not be athletically inclined, who might not play sports, it gives them an alternative avenue to get involved in sports or play or physical fitness. The Teen Leaders Club is another decades-old program for ages three to eighteen. This teaches citizenship again, but focuses on leadership through community service. It begins with a weekend-long training, which is statewide with other YMCA teen leaders, that introduces them to a strong peer group. The idea is to plant the seeds of leadership, so that these people will aspire to the types of roles that you all are filling in the community today, and it's always been very productive. We get twelve to fifteen in the Leaders Club every year. Leaders in Training is another avenue of job preparation and preparation for leadership skills in the community. It's a two-week job preparation program, we do it in the spring. Those who graduate from that program and who will turn eighteen by June of that year are eligible to apply for employment at the Y as junior camp counselors or other entry-level jobs. And so it teaches them child protection, early childhood development, the core skills they will need to supervise others, to care for children in camp, and take on increasing levels of responsibility, judgment, and decision-making. The program also focuses on community service, so we've worked at the Madison Public Library, in the Community Garden, Dress for Success, and other local social service organizations. Youth in Government is a new program that we introduced this year. We have wanted to do it for quite some time. It concentrates squarely on the center of teaching civics and citizenship and leadership in a model legislature situation. For this program, it's a semester-long, we get a faculty advisor, this year we used a faculty advisor from the junior school, for a semester of learning about how a bill becomes a law. So this delegation begins to identify what they would like to put out as model bills, they research, they present their case for the new legislation, and the program ends with a delegation presenting their bills and debating their merits. The program typically ends at the semester with a statewide delegation to debate the bills. We didn't take it that far for our first out this year, we'd like to do that in a subsequent program. I was pleased in the spring that Mayor Conley was able to be with us, we did the delegation right there at the Y. I think we had eight new potential pieces of legislation that were presented by each of the authors, and it was quite impressive to observe. One program that is still on the wish list is called Achievers, and this is a program that helps kids from less-than-advantaged homes navigate the process of getting through high school and understanding the process of getting into college. It targets students that might come from lower-income families, families where maybe English is a second language, where mom and dad haven't necessarily graduated from college. So this matches these students with an adult mentor to help them navigate and understand what they need to do in high school to qualify to apply to college, and what that whole process looks like, guiding them through to completion and enrollment in college. We haven't been able to populate this program yet. We do have adult mentors who are ready to go, we haven't been fully able to reach the students that we need to reach, but we're hopeful of doing that, so that's on the wish list. So, back to the utilization for a bit, because this might be something that we want to talk more about. As I said earlier, we've got very healthy attraction of teens to the programs, the utilization has historically been high, but we've had a bit of a funding gap this year. We normally fund the teen programs to avoid any fees through our annual campaign that we raise funds for every year, that goes to financial assistance, that's direct assistance for those who can't afford the full cost of programs, where there is a fee, and it also goes to assuring that certain programs don't carry a fee. And then in addition to that, in the past, we've had funding from the Borough of Madison to cover those costs. We didn't have that funding this year, and so we started to experiment with charging some modest fees, five dollars for the Teen Scene evening on Friday nights, and fifty dollars a year for a year of the Teen Leaders Club. And it's possible that those fees are driving down enrollment. We started it just this fall as a way to investigate what the impact would be on our market. Teen Scene usually attracts sixty to seventy participants on a Friday night. This fall, with the fee, we've had about fifteen on average. For our Teen Leaders Club, which is twelve to fifteen students, we only have two registered right now, so we're afraid that maybe that, and that overriding intention of trying to attract teens and get their attention, we may have created a bit of a hurdle for them with the fee. So a bit about our budget for this. The cost of the teen programs is really centered on paying two full-time benefited professional staff, and then the cost of twenty part-time teen, teen leader staff members, who are young adults in most cases. So the whole, the budget for all of the programs in the nineteen-twenty academic year, the one that we started this fall, is forty-eight thousand and some. If you just separate out the Madison teens, it's the cost of their, share of that budget would be twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-six, or a forty-six dollar per student participant cost. And so that, that leaves us with a bit of a funding gap. I want to pause there and just see if there are questions or points that I should go back to.
Deb?
Hi, as a mom of three teens, twin fifteen-year-olds and a seventeen-year-old, so they're all at the high school now, just a couple of things. The first being, I think you have a marketing problem. With the exception of Teen Scene, and outside of the meeting you and I had in January, I've heard of none of this. Now, we are not members of the Y, and other than when the kids were enrolled in Kirby for aftercare for kindergarten, we have never been members of the Y for a variety of reasons. If we're getting information about it, it's not catching attention, I could not tell you a single thing about any of these programs, nothing comes from the schools, there's no con, there's no information. So I think that's problem number one, is you have to figure out how better to reach, if it's going to the kids at the schools, it's not making it to the parents, so there might be a gap there. I don't know if it's going to the kids at all, and I have two out of three that actually do tell me what's going on, so I tend to have a vague idea. One, forget it. The other thing is looking at your participation numbers for the teen center use. You know, you say you have two hundred and eighty-four participants, I'm assuming that's six to twelve grade, probably mostly, the junior school I would guess, but there's fourteen-hundred students, six through twelve. So I struggle saying that you have a robust program when you don't even reach a ton of the kids, and I think some of it's marketing, some of it, especially once they reach high school. I know my kids have sports that run till six o'clock at night, or meets that go till nine, or whatever the case may be, soccer matches, marching band that goes till all hours is on the weekends. And so when they have downtime, they're hanging out with their friends, my oldest is in a D and D group, there's all sorts of different things that they're doing. You know, there's a, I can tell you, one of the big hits is they drive to East Hanover to play volleyball, there's evidently a whole volleyball, indoor volleyball complex, that's where they spend the whole winter, every Friday night. And then the last thing that I have to say is, I question the borough potentially putting money into it when we have the rec program that we have, and the, the kids are not responding to it. I don't think five dollars is a huge deal for the teen scene, I think, you know, the kids spend more than that at, you know, any of the places in town, Five Guys, you know, wherever it might be in town, I'm drawing a blank of the one that's right across from the junior school, that they go to all the time.
Slamwich.
Slamwich, thank you. You know, and that sort of thing. So I just, I love the Y and I think it's great, I just, teens are so hard, and without, right, for me, a lot of it's the marketing, but I struggle putting it back in our budget when there's not a population of teens that are trying to go there. That's my two cents.
Pat? So, one of the reasons Diane is here tonight is because Astrid actually asked me to meet with the Y, because she was kind of conflicted out and it kind of fell into our area. And the issue really came up about the fact of the funding. I mean, years ago, when my kids were teenagers, we had the teen center at the Civic Center, and we were funding it to a certain amount of money. At some point, we decided it really wasn't working that well for us, and it would be better for us to shift it to the Y along with some money, so that it could help pay for it. Up until, I think, this year we were funding it, this year we stopped funding it, I don't, at least I was not aware that it had come out of the budget until I heard about it this fall. I don't remember it coming up during the budget discussion, maybe I missed that, but anyway. So the real question was, you know, do we want to have some sort of teen center-type activity? Do we want the Y to continue to do it? Do we want to help fund a portion of it? And I think, really, part of the issue was, when we sat down, I was not aware of a lot of the things that were going on, my kids are much older, and I felt that the council wasn't either, so really, I asked them to come here tonight and first talk about all the different programs that they are taking care of on behalf of the teens in the town, and you know, yes, a lot of kids play sports and kids have other activities, but there's a, a portion of the population that could use this. So this was really to start the conversation about what can we do for next year, this year's kind of over. I'd hope to continue it next year, but obviously, someone else is going to have to pick this up, but I think the idea for the council is really to think about, do we want to have some type of partnership with the Y for this, and how can we come up with some sort of funding mechanism that helps them out? Maybe there's some, also some fee to the kids, you know, but this was sort of the start of the whole thing, this is not the end of it. So, I just wanted people to hear what I'm saying.
Just to clarify some of these numbers, just taking Diane at the top row, for example, so that's two hundred and eighty-four unique participants for the teen center use on the Monday through Friday. Some small number may come thirty times during the year, some may have only been once, but it's a...
Exactly right, and I'm glad you pointed that out, that there can be some duplication here.
Or, or I'm checking that, that may not be dup, because obviously, Teen Scenes, I know, would be at two thirteen with an average of sixty shown each time, so that, so that's unique people, and we know a handful come all the time and so on, so it's like, what I'm just trying to get at is, you know, to Pat's point, is how do you translate this to a, as I've often said, that the borough should not be given grants but paying for fee for services, so how do we understand what we're providing? Go to you in just a second, John, because I'll just throw in two more editorial comments that, you know, it is a very valuable program, I was part of Leaders Club way back when, and maybe that's where I learned how to be a mayor, I don't know, but it certainly was part of the process and got me going in the right direction. And the other challenge with teen programs is the fact that they are incredibly value, valuable and important, but what works for one class may not work for the next class, and so it is a very challenging area to work with, that we can make a YMCA directors, which I've had a little experience in, headspin on trying to figure out what, what to do year to year. John?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for the presentation, both of you, I think it's been, it's been an excellent presentation and certainly informative for the council people, as, as you understand. You and I have talked about you coming before the council before, particularly as we roll through the budget season, you know, to kind of talk about what you are, what you've been, what you're going to do, that kind of thing, to see if there's any possibility to provide some funding of some kind. I work with, very closely with the Madison-Chatham Coalition, Allison Barton, and, and the people that she has on that board, and some of the teens get involved once in a while in their programs, so I think, and I think that's excellent, and that's focused on substance and substance abuse and use. So, you know, I'm kind of familiar with some of these programs and really like them a lot. One of the questions I had is, what have we been funding in the past? How much have we been funding in the past?
It was twenty, twenty thousand, I think it was.
Twenty thousand?
Yep, and so that was a, just a flat grant, and that came out of the, when the agreement was made with the Y, when we closed down the teen center at the Civic Center, which at that time raised risk management concerns, let alone was it worth an investment, because it cost quite a bit more than the twenty thousand. And that's, so it was, it was just a flat fee based on what it cost before.
I, I, I absolutely appreciate what Deb was saying about publicity and awareness in the schools, and with the parents, you know, particularly to know what benefit they're going to, they could get out of this program, and whether their friends want to go to it or not, as an option for all of the other activities they're involved in, because they are involved in tremendous number of activities. I just wonder isn't, if there isn't an opportunity perhaps for a small group of people, both the borough and the Y, to sit down and kind of talk this through and come back with a recommendation of some kind? You know, I just, I would hate to say flat out, no, we're not going to do anything, you know, because the programs are so valuable, and I think have such a tremendous benefit in the community, that maybe we could do something like that, I don't know.
Deb, before we go to Maureen, but she hasn't, quite Maureen.
Oh, so, so this is a really tricky population, we're talking about middle, basically middle schoolers into freshman year of high school. Not everybody, not every child is, is a field hockey superstar or a football player. The teen, the teen center is a safe place for kids who maybe don't have, they don't, they don't fit right into that square peg, into the round pole. I agree, Deb, it's, it needs to be better marketed, but I have, I have seen what the teens, what, what these programs can do, and they, they really, that twenty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, but it makes a difference in these children's lives, and I think it's a, I think it's a, it's an investment that we, we need to be making for, for this population.
Carmella, and then, then, well, then, we, okay, you'll, you'll yield to the...
Yield these.
Deb, go ahead.
Just real quick, first of all, it's not that I don't think Y programs aren't valuable, I do, I just think we're going to spend them, that we need to make sure what we're spending the money on. Maybe the solution is, I'm sitting here and my head's turning, Dan Ross, who's the Curriculum Assistant Superintendent, and Frank Santora, who's the People Personnel Assistant Superintendent of the school district, they do surveys of the kids all the time, they're a captive audience, they literally put them in front of their Chromebooks that they all have, and say, "Take this survey right now." Getting some ideas from them of what they would be interested in might be a help, I mean, obviously, you're not going to please all of them, but I'm just thinking, trying to get some input into what is it they're looking for, what would they, like I said, my son goes with a group of about fifteen kids, they drive to East Hanover and play volleyball for two hours every Friday night. You know, if they could get that at the Y, would they be, would they go over to the Y? Why wouldn't they? I know we'd all be happier if they were more local, so finding out what those kids are interested in and what they're looking for, and it doesn't have to be sports-oriented. You know, I know the library where I teach at has smash tournaments during lunch, every day during lunch, they're in there on big screen doing video games and interacting with each other while they're doing them, there's actual human interaction going on, so. Like I said, they do surveys all the time, trying to find, they do them for the MCC, they do them for MASA, they do them for various things, that might get you some ideas as to how, A, how to market to them, and B, you know, what they're interested in, what they're looking for.
Carmella?
I think that's very important, what Deb just said and what John just said, is to bring people together to talk about, how do you go about this? And I think one of the things that you have to remember about teenagers is you have to ask them what they really want. And I, I could see gathering, there's a lot of smart kids in this town. I'm always impressed when they come here, you know, on a yearly basis, you know, the high school kids come here once a year to learn about the different, the different departments and whatever, and it just blows my mind, they're so smart. Those are the kid, these are the people that you need to say, so what, what do you need? You know, what, what do you need? How do you think you could get your friends to be more involved in whatever? I think you always have to kind of go to the source, so, you know, I, I see, I see what both of them are talking about. I find it interesting that there's, you know, Madison participants and all participants, where are these kids coming from? Are they coming from mostly Florham Park or Chatham Township or whatever? It just seems to me that, you know, that, we do a lot of shared services with a lot of these different municipalities. of these different municipalities, and if a good share of them are coming from Florham Park, you know, why aren't we talking to the Boards of Education or whoever in those particular towns? Because there is, there's, you know, when you look at the teen scene, it's 368 participants, and only about 200 of those kids are from Madison. You know, so where are they coming from? I'd like to, I'd like to know that. I think that, that might be helpful to you as well.
Do you mean broken down? Because this is the total, and this, and Madison is the subset. So if, if they're not Madison, they're from the Chatham's, Harding, Florham Park...
My guess is what would come out is, Chatham Borough would be the next largest chunk.
Largest, okay.
Maybe the township in Florham Park, may, you know...
There aren't that many kids in Harding.
Yeah.
John, were you...
Yeah, I, I think I'm finished, but I, I think Diane and Scott, we sat and we talked for a couple hours, which was like, really, really good. But I think you've got to go to the source and ask the kids, you know, what, what do you want? What of these programs do you think that you can get other kids to aspire to coming?
That's, that sounds helpful. It seems as if your feedback is that our volume is too low to be significant, and I guess I would just ask you to hold open before judgment whether that is actually true. There is a large universe of teens out there. Some of them play sports, some of them do other things at night. There's a group of kids who choose the Y for lots of reasons. So I would ask you to just think about, if you think that the volume is too low to be significant, what would be the volume that would be significant? Just for some guidance.
So, John, and then Maureen, and then Pat?
Yeah, I just had, I just wanted to add a comment on, you have this, this program that you are thinking about doing, which is called Achievers. I don't know if you recall, but the Rotary Club of Madison tried to do this same kind of a program called the Mentorship Program a few years ago. And we had lots of our meetings at the Y, and Gwen was, Gwen Riddick was involved, and a few other people. It's a very, very difficult task to undertake, particularly if you're looking at people that don't speak, whose parents don't speak English, you know, that kind of thing. It's very, very difficult to get them involved, because you need parent parental support and that kind of thing, and it's, so it's, it's just a tough program. The kids, and the kids drop out after a while because they've got other things to do, or it's, maybe it was, they started out because it wasn't the basketball season, then when basketball comes up, then they drop out of the program. It's difficult to start it, keep it up, and keep it going. I'm glad to sit down and talk with you guys about it, what our experience was, you know, and Gwen, worked with Gwen, too, and a couple of other people from Rotary that were involved, like, you know, well, I can't think of the names right now, but a few other people were involved in it, too. So we'd be glad to do that, but it's, that's a tough one to get started.
It is tough, yeah. Mentoring is really tough. One of the, one of the issues with mentoring is the child protection issue.
Yeah.
You really kind of need a structured and professional staff for that, and Rotary is a volunteer organization, that it makes it that much tougher.
Yeah, we brought in, we actually brought in somebody, and I'll, then I'll finish. We brought in somebody to train the mentors how to mentor, because we wanted to make sure that everybody understood what it's like to mentor, that they were all on the same page, and that they did it effectively. So that's kind of got to be done as well.
Thank you.
Maureen, and then Pat?
I'm just gonna, you know, we talk about, we're looking at the numbers, and yes, they look small, but they're, they're critical, because this, this is the number that's not involved in sports, and not involved in the yearbook, and not involved in the newspaper, and not involved in Rotary Act and all these things. These, these are the kids that are falling through the cracks. And the teen scene is a safe place for them to go and play basketball, and hear about, oh, what's this leadership thing? Maybe I'll try that. Then they, they may become, I would imagine they might be coming from a household where these things aren't, aren't talked about and encouraged or whatever, but it, it opens doors. It opens employment doors. We saw that they have the leadership training, which allows them, at the age of 18, to go on and, and be counselors. My son was a, was a counselor at the Y for years. It was one of the most formative things he, he's, he's done. He still uses the, what he learned at the Y. So I, I don't want us, I don't want us to get bogged down in saying you have, we have to have a certain number of participants before we fund it, because I think we have to recognize that maybe that number doesn't have to be that much bigger than it, than it is right now. Because right now, that's a, that's a, it's a, it's a critical number for those kids.
Pat?
So really, my question for Diane is, in terms of one you need to know about your funding for next year, when do you really do your budget for the teen center for next year? Do you start January 1st?
That's right. We have a calendar year budget.
Okay. So we, we really need to do something if we're going to work this out with them, because I think there's really two issues. One is, we should probably go back and look at what our numbers were before we turn this over to them, just to see really, relatively speaking, or they, I suspect they may be more successful than we were, but I don't remember what the numbers were back then.
My, 45,000, you know, with...
No, I'm talking about the number of children.
Number of children, yeah. There, the Y is certainly more successful. As I said, with risk management, I went in there one time, there was one employee and one teen.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, I think from looking back at it and having talked to the Y, I think they're much more successful than we were, and it was at what I consider to be a very reasonable price. And again, you know, just the risk management alone probably was, having served on the Board of Ed and the, and the, here, you know, you deal with this stuff all the time, most people don't know what goes on, but it's, it's always a challenge. So I think it's really important, we try to keep this going forward. The one thing, though, that I think, Diane, was a challenge for people here, was the outside participants and the people feeling they don't want to, Madison doesn't want to fund everybody. So the question is, how do we make it fair to the residents, the taxpayers of Madison, so that we're not picking up the tamper everybody? And I think that's something else that we really need to work, but I think, you know...
Yeah, I think the setup was, if you're a Madison team, you got to go for free. If you were from another town, if, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Diane, it was free with membership, otherwise there was a $5 charge for, so everyone in that gap in between, if they were not a member and not in Madison, they, they paid something. Is that correct?
I believe you're right. It's going back sometime.
Yep. So, let me just talk about some next steps, and then if there's more discussion, we can go forward, but I want to make sure we don't get too much into telling the Y how to do their business, as opposed to how we can strengthen a partnership. But certainly, the Y has been a strong part of our community for, forever, and taking care of teens is something we're, near, dear to our hearts, everyone. So the fact that having, as I said before, a flat grant probably does not work for the borough, but having an understanding of a fee for services, and so there's a clear understanding of what, what we're paying for and what we're getting in return, I think that helps residents and the families that don't have teens, so they understand exactly what the borough is committed to. So I think we should work, work in that direction as we start looking at the 2020 budget. Any others? Maureen, do you?
No, I was just saying, I think it's important that, you know, with that, the Y does go to Florham Park and Chatham and Harding, and say, you know, this is the model we have with Madison, and we, we'd like to pursue, you know, we're, we're serving your teens, we'd like to see you come on board as well.
And that's also very important with Project Community Pride.
Right.
Pat?
Yeah, I was going to say, I might reconsider the statement, though, about fee for services, only because we were doing it on a, you know, regardless of how many kids showed up, we paid a certain amount of money every year. And I think you want to try to make this as successful as possible, so you don't want the Y doing things that are necessarily just going to drive up attendance, but not be the right thing for kids. So you might want to be a little careful about that, maybe do one more year of funding and then come up with some sort of hybrid, because they are doing, they are doing Project Community Pride for a flat fee, they took that over, and they've been great partners with us. I think, you know, we really want to make sure they can be successful at this, because it's important for us that our kids are staying out of trouble.
Yeah.
Just to put it in simple terms, I mean, that's why we have Project Community Pride, that's why we started the teen center. It's really to try to make sure that our kids are, stay on the right path, you know, now and through life.
And certainly, as I define fee for service, I think it just defines the services that we're getting. It is a very slippery slope if you get into, we pay you for each visit, because you gear up for 50 visits a year, and you get 40. The costs of delivering the program haven't changed, but, you know, which is something that...
That's what I was saying. We signed up for a certain amount of money every year to run it with staff, and the, you know, the, the risk costs and whatever, so we may want to take a hard look at that and maybe at least do one more year of some sort of flat fee, and then, and then some sort of hybrid down the road. And then I think, you know, at some point, it would be good if you came back and talked about Project Community Pride and what's happening there, and then also some other opportunities we talked about. You know, long-term is a place like the Y a good place to start to look at, you know, possibly making it a place for the seniors to go as well, because you have a lot of advantages there that we don't have necessarily in our own facilities. So I think, you know, there's other places that we could expand the partnership. So I hope you guys can keep that going into the future.
That'd be great. We'd welcome that conversation. It's, it's premature to promise anything, but when I hear about Friday night volleyball, we'll actually have a gym that we could play volleyball in, in about a year. So we'd be happy to come back and have that conversation. Mr. Mayor and Council, would it suit for the Y to submit a proposal for your further consideration?
Yep. I think you've kind of heard what we're asking for, so I think, take, take that back and put, put in a proposal based on, on that guidance.
Great. We'll do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Scott.
Scott, step up so we can record you at home.
Oh.
Yep.
Can I stay here?
Nope.
No, no, you guys stand and talk to the Y.
The microphones aren't that sophisticated.
All right. I just want to close by saying, thank you very much for listening to us. I think we have a great opportunity to do something together, to partner, to partner together on this. I've heard your comments, and they're heartfelt, and I really appreciate them. And I think, when I think about the, the kids that we're trying to, to get here, and Maureen, I appreciate your comments about, you know, the, the kids that are somewhat maybe disenfranchised. So when I look at the numbers, and I agree with, marketing could be beefed up, right? And yeah, the, the numbers maybe appear, appear small, but when you look at the numbers, there's, how many are counted? 200 kids, 250, 500 kids have self-selected to go in here. There's a reason for that. So there's a service that's being provided for kids that otherwise aren't getting service with something else. And maybe they're not the athlete, maybe they're not the debater, you know, but there's something here that's resonating with these kids. So with a beefed-up program, enhanced marketing, reaching out to more people, talking to other communities, I, I think any municipality that is not thinking about how they're keeping their kids safe is doing disservice to that community. And every community has to be thinking about those disenfranchised kids out there. And this is an opportunity, I think, for us to do something, making sure that all kids are getting serviced. So that's my comment. And I, I thank you very much for, for listening to us, so, thank you.
Thank you, Diane, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to the next agenda. There are no ordinances for hearing tonight because of a short time in between meetings. So Ordinance 53-2019, which was introduced at the last meeting, will have a hearing on December 9th. And now, this is the second of two invitations for discussion from the public. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, keep your comments three minutes or less, and, but I'll cut you off at four minutes. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to introductory ordinances. Will a clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for December 9th, 2019. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 54-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $363,000 from the municipal open space trust fund for facility improvements to Dodge Field.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 54-2019.
I'll second that.
Council discussion, so the public understands the bathrooms, the fieldhouse, the playground all need quite a bit of updating at Dodge Field, and so this is the, using the open space trust fund to help take care of that.
And we do have a plan that's being prepared to present to the open space that covers the whole Dodge Field, when they will do the updating of the playground and the other facilities there. They have done the actual field, and they've improved the basketball.
The basketball courts are done.
Yeah, those are done.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 55-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $85,000 from the general capital improvement fund for additional remediation testing at the rear of the Hartley Dodge Memorial.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 55-2019.
I'll second it.
Council discussion? So this is, there were gasoline tanks behind the, behind Hartley Dodge, and this is further remediation that is, needs to be done, and initial testing for that. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.